Oh, she said it's loud. It is six o'clock. We will open meeting with roll call. Mr. Oglesby?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Tracy?
Here.
Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Harding?
Here.
Mr. La Turner?
Here.
Mr. Jackson? If you will stand and join with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the required for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. First on the agenda, we have meeting minutes from regular council meeting minute from March seventeen and fire department meeting minutes from March twenty seventh.
Make a motion when you approve the meeting minutes and put it on file.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby to approve the minutes and place on file.
Second.
Second by Rick, was that you?
Yes.
Bob? Second by Bob La Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have bills to pay, sixty-nine thousand, two dollars and twenty cents.
Make a motion if we appropriate the funds to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Bob La Turner to pay the bills.
Second.
A second by Neil Oglesby. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, um, I had a video to show, but we couldn't get the audio to work. So, I'll give you a brief synopsis of what it was. Um, so it's through, let me find the email. It's through... The website is on... The National Fitness Campaign. Um, and what it is, I, so I had a Zoom call. Um, they have a National Outdoor Wellness Campaign. And, in short, what it looks like is, um, really like this big pad, and I think it's concrete and then some rubber stuff, and it has different, um, natural things on it for exercise. It appeals to all ages. Um, it even includes like artwork and they, they really stress it could be local artists, it could, they could bring in their own people. Um, something that would fit in the park and really what it is is just to increase, uh, people getting out and doing something. Um, aesthetically, it looks really, really good. Um, I was thinking of like our, our older population, it would be easy to go down. I mean, it was like things like rock steps and, and things that would be on there to use. Um, they even have the part of the campaign is coming down and showing people or people that would be willing to train for courses or classes or something like that of how to use all this stuff and what would most benefit different age groups or different people with different physical abilities and/or disabilities. Um, so that's basically what the whole thing was about. It was a three-minute long video to show you, and I wish you could see this. The, the look of it is really, really cool. Um, so then it gets into costs. So roughly, and, and they have two different sizes. One is, is one size with all of these, um, things on one side. And the other side, if you got one that was bigger, it's about equal footprint on the up, on the backside end. But it's just bare and it's for classes, like dance classes, aerobic classes, things like that. Soon, you had two options. So price range, it ranges from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, she said they have grants that go up to, usually up to about sixty thousand dollars. And she said that depends on a lot of things, on, on your population, on, um, on where you're at locally, on how well it fits, because they like it to be somewhere that's a more natural setting, that they feel like it would be very easy accessibility-wise for people to get to. She just guessed. She said, I have no idea, but she said, I would guess you guys would fall somewhere in the fifteen to sixty thousand dollar range. She said she did look, um, at our map. She liked the city park, but she said that would be something we would all, um, talk to about to get. So, she said, now, I know that's a lot of extra money. She said, now, towns that have been, I think she said, don't quote me, but I feel like she said, all my notes are, are on my desk, um, Coffeyville. I think she said they were the closest town, maybe Iola, um, that have jumped on board with this. So she said, I know you're not too far from there if you ever want to drive and see it. But she said, most of the other funds that they got were from donations. And so she was like, I know, I see that you have a Mercy in there. Are they ever willing to donate anything? So I said, you know, they, they donated to our splash pad. Uh, could be something to talk about. She said some of that money could also be in kind. She didn't go into detail of what that was. So maybe some stuff that our people could do. So, all of that to say, looks really nice, but it would be some money. So I said, when we had a meeting tonight, I would bring you guys up to par on it. Again, I wish the video was here because it could explain a lot better. You would get a better idea of what it looked like. Um, but really, next step would be not agreeing to anything. It would really just be like to look at what funding sources would be available. So I said, I would bring it up to you guys, see if that was even something you wished for me to move forward with, or if I would just tell her, right now, that's not, um, not something on our forefront. Or we can even wait. I told her I would give her a call tomorrow, but we can even wait till the next meeting hopefully we get a video up. So you can see what the video is.
I posted, the link is on the agenda if you guys want to watch that.
So I know that was like a very short synopsis, a probably not a great example of what it actually was. Uh, like I said, I wish you could see it because I feel like it could be very useful for a whole lot of people. Um, but it's just pretty costly. I was kind of surprised at the number she threw out there. Um, I don't know why, because I know things like concrete and stuff like that, that's expensive on its own. Um, and it would be stuff, what it looked like, it was stuff like the, the steps and things like that. Those would be things that are, um, bold to there. They aren't, they weren't anything that can be taken. Yes. So I'm sure that's adds to a lot of the expense too, but anyway. So, would you like to wait till you can look at the video yourself? Do you think, not something that we even want to pursue right now? She did say there's a limited number of grants per year, and I think she said for Kansas, there are five left. Now, I don't know how many towns she's talked to or they've talked to. I'm sure there are more people than this lady. Um, if anybody else is even talking about it, she didn't go that far to say.
Where at, at the city park, would we look at putting it?
Um, you know, I don't even know. And that was just one, I assume she probably looked at some type of Google map or something and just saw that there was already stepped down there. That was probably somewhere that would draw people down there already. Um, so it would be empty there. But she said it could be wherever we thought was beneficial. I don't know. I thought about the opposite side of where the playground is, that open area. Um, but I don't know really if that would be big enough because I don't have the specific dimension of what, what the size of the court. I think they call it a fitness court is what they actually call it.
I was just trying to think, is that something that people could put like lawn chairs or something? Maybe that's where we do the big thing.
Right. I was thinking you were across the bridge, like on the...
On the action? She's thinking the dog park area. Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But yeah, that was just my idea. I have no idea.
That would be great.
And then they said there were extra things like, you know, shading area that you could do later on and like for things like that for resting or if you wanted, she, they set up a thing now with the shading over the, um, like the exercise court area for people when it's hot out or whatever, they can still use it. But those would be also additional costs.
Personally, I, I think that, I think it's something pricing-wise or something like that is something to look at. I, I think if we were going out looking for something like that, yeah, that means we've already done our, you know, budgets or figured out how we're going to pay for it, but to walk in in April and say, hey, let's try to, there's some money that, where's even going to come from?
Well, I feel like for sure, it wouldn't even need until twenty-six.
So...
Um, until the fiscal year twenty-six. So, I think the next step really would be, if we wanted to even take a next step, would be, okay, now let's see if and where we could get donations from, if that's even a possibility. That would be maybe reaching out to...
Definitely, we want to get some numbers nailed down before we went forward with it. Once it's in twenty-two, twenty-six, that gives us some time.
Right, right. So are you, are you interested in hearing more about it, or do you just want to squash it and, and not? I guess that would be my question.
I don't want to rule it out, but I don't want to run blindly into the light or...
Right. So maybe just more information?
Yeah, watch the link. We'd love to see that first.
The what?
There's a link here, she said.
Uh, it's a three-minute video that, yeah, it's like a trailer, I guess, or whatever. Yes.
And no matter what it is, it, it requires maintenance. So it's not a one-time fee. Whatever you get requires maintenance.
Yeah, probably some. So if, if you're okay, I'll tell her, uh, not ruling it out, but we definitely need, especially on the number side, what that looks like, um, and what that would look like if we reached out to potential donors. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Are we okay with that? Okay. Alright. Mr. Holt, we're gonna let you come up.
You got a bit down.
I know this has, uh, probably been already brought up by the code enforcement. It's the single-wide trailer that is sitting in the King's Edition. Uh, I know that we've lived in this area for over almost twenty years and we pay quite a bit in taxes and the housing area is a very nice housing area. So, when this single-wide trailer was brought into the area, all we see is our, uh, house value just kind of go down. And I know there's a city statute on single-wide trailers, and I believe this one's older than thirty years or more, so. Just trying to figure out what we are going to be able to do about it if any.
So, um, she was sent a certified letter. Is that correct? Is that term like code enforcement? Um, code enforcement sent a letter because, like you said, it is against ordinance. Um, uh, we have an ordinance that states, uh, this is under mobile home placement, that no single-wide mobile home shall be located in any area within the corporate limits of the city of Galena, Kansas, unless such dwelling is within a mobile home park, which that is not, that is operating under the approval of and compliance with the city of Galena. So that right there is against code. We knew that right away. Um, but, uh, she would not sign and since then has told we, our code enforcement officer came in here, but, but this is rated, so it's on her property, but what she told the code enforcement officer, he stated that she said it was not her trailer, it is her daughter's and she's not taking responsibility of it. She said her, so that's, we're not getting there. And she said that's where her daughter, her daughter didn't tell her she was bringing the trailer. This is why she told her code enforcement officer. So, um, since it is against code, we asked, um, our building inspector Gary Rhodes to go, we'll get out, look at it because it automatically is against code. Uh, we have our, um, checklist, I guess you could call it here, um, that he went through. It does appear to be vacant, at least as of this time. Um, he did mark a couple of things. It says whenever the building or structure or any portion thereof, because of dilapidation, deterioration, decay, vandalism, or faulty construction, or the removal, movement, or instability of any portion of the ground necessary for purposes of supporting such building, or the deterioration, decay, or inadequacy of its foundation, or any other cause, is likely to partially or completely collapse. So that was marked. Um, there are a few other on the back. It says whenever the building or structure is in such condition as to comes to a public nuisance known to the common law or inequity jurisprudence. Uh, that was one. There's another, wherever the plumbing system is totally or partially damaged, destroyed, removed, or otherwise made inoperable or unsanitary. Um, another, where, for, whenever the electrical system is totally or partially damaged, destroyed, removed, or otherwise made inoperable, unsafe, or hazardous. Uh, whenever the building or structure has become an unattractive nuisance to children or is open to unauthorized or unlawful entry. And then the last marked was whenever the building or structure, because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, decay, damage, faulty construction or arrangement, trash, filth, inadequate light, air ventilation, or sanitation facilities, or otherwise is determined to be unsafe, unsanitary, unfit for human habitation, or in such a condition that is likely to cause sickness or disease. So, that is all, uh, marked on this. This is what we always, always use for our, um, our condemnation process. So, um, because of all of that, it is recommended to, to condemn the structure. It, there is no way it could be brought up to code because it is against code.
You can watch them.
So, um, if that is the way we want to go.
Is this a, a area, could we do an emergency condemnation order on it?
It's a motor vehicle you got to tow. They have to be registered just like anything else.
It's good tag, one is like car.
And she was there when it came in. We seen her. So she knows.
The code enforcement officer went straight out and she was there then.
So, um, if we wanted to move forward with condemnation, we would have to a resolution, um, for the hearing. Would that still be the same case for it?
Do you want to do an emergency one?
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Have you hooked up any utilities?
Not yet.
Do what? What'd you say?
Has it hooked up any utilities?
No. So, um, is that something you would all, you think we should move forward with? That would have to be a council decision. It would be resolution twenty-five dash zero four. If that's what you wanted to move forward with.
Make a motion that we move forward with resolution twenty-five dash zero four.
Second.
We have a motion by Bob La Turner, a second by Rick Tracy to move forward with resolution twenty-five dash zero four. Um, I'll read this aloud.
I've got a question on that. So, as far as that goes, can we just move at that point?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'm just going to abstain until I get my question.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, a combination, and a condemnation, if you can just tow it out of there instead of tearing it down, what I'm getting at, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We tow it.
It ain't going to be too much, right?
So if we do an emergency, we need to tow it.
Right. So, yeah, so we, we set the hearing date, so that's what this will say. So let me read, let me read this real fast. It says, "A resolution fixing a time and place providing for notice of a hearing before the governing body of the city of Galena, Kansas, at which the owner, his or her agent, lien holders of record, occupants, and other parties in the interest of structures located within said city and described herein may appear and show cause by said structure should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished as an unsafe or dangerous structure. Whereas the enforcing officer of the city of Galena, Kansas, did on or before the fifth day of April twenty-twenty-five, file with the governing body of said city, a statement in writing that the structure herein after described is unsafe and dangerous. Now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the city of Galena, Kansas, that a hearing will be held on the blank, day of blank." So that's when we, we can set the hearing. Um, I would say that's...
I, I got a question though. Why do we have to have a hearing on it? So they broke the code by just dragging it in the yard. I mean, it shouldn't, like, right now, there, they go ready, there's no hearing. I don't care if they tear it down. It just needs to get out.
That would remove it. I would not suggest going on the private property and removing it without this kind of notice.
But, so I can, I can break the law for thirty-sixty days before.
Now, this may be before next week is our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you can set a public hearing. Um, we've got to, but you have to notify, we have to give notice to the actual owner, which that hasn't been done yet. So you can't go and, you know, and we've got the daughter's information because she's had plenty of things to hear here, so.
Yeah. So...
Set the date for the next meeting and then we can go ahead and have that.
Yeah, let me get the date. The date would be April twenty-first. That would be our next meeting date. Everybody okay with that? So... So that a hearing will be held on the twenty-first day of April twenty-twenty-five before the governing body of the city at six P.M. at the city council chambers in the Galena City Hall, at which the owner, his or her agent, any lien holders of record, any occupants, and any other parties in interest, as that term is defined by law of the structure located at zero, 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 please circle. And then gives the property a description, um, and then we'll say when we pass it by the council.
You made that in a motion.
You, yeah.
Yeah.
He did. We just haven't finished the vote.
Yeah. Do we, does he need to modify it? Well, since we have the date in there now.
We didn't on the first one. We just didn't hold it. Well, the first one never passed, I guess, so I just started over.
Okay. Well, let's, let's start over because we didn't put the date in there.
Okay, same motion with the addition of the date that we've agreed on.
Alright, we have a motion by Bob La Turner to pass resolution twenty-five dash zero four with the hearing date to be held on the twenty-first of April.
Second.
Second by Rick Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That work for you?
That works. Thank you.
Okay. Air Perry. Amy Saunders.
For those of you that may or may not know, Sandra and I have the lots on Main between third and fourth street. And we were approached the other day about a project that someone wants to do that would be part of those lots. And this project would be an archway over Main, over, from our lots over to where Grady's is. It's reminiscent, if you think around the early nineteen hundreds, a lot of cities had those. Miami, Oklahoma has one. So kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. It's kind of a cool idea. We're not opposed to it. Not opposed to letting someone use part of our lots. But we have concerns that we wanted to bring up. Um, one, this person, uh, told us that once it's erected, that it would be gifted to the city. I'm asking the city if they know anything about an arch that would go over Main that would then be gifted to you.
I know some discussion about it. Nothing's, it's been talked about to me for probably, since I was on council, probably. The idea of it. Not, not super specifics, but the idea of it.
Well, and this, um, individual, when we were discussing this, I said, how, what, what are the drawings? What, what does it look like? What is, and they said it's about ninety percent complete. Well, I measured it out and to go from the edge of the sidewalk where our lots are to the edge of the sidewalk where Grady's is, so it's going to need to be wider than that, that alone was eighty feet. So this structure would be ninety feet, give or take. And we all know what happened a Sunday or so ago. I mean, I've got roof damage, not for my roof, but because the building next to me gifted its roof to me. Now I need to do repairs. So, I have a list of, of different concerns that we have. Again, we're not opposed to it. It's kind of cool. It's kind of reminiscent of their like mining days and stuff like that. I'm originally from California and Victorville, California's got one. But we, we have questions. One, obviously, the city has not approved of something like this. Um, who's designing it? You know, that's, that's not something that, I'm going to pick on Josh. You and I just, hey, we both have a stick welder. We know how to weld. Let's put a ninety-foot span over something. I mean, this has to be an engineering firm. It's got to be done right. So the questions are, you know, who's building it? Um, how is it being constructed? What's it going to look like when it's done? I mean, if it's going to go over our main, we want to be proud of what it looks like. So I think before it should go up, we should all be in agreeance. This is going to, you know, complement us, not look like a wart. You know, something right there.
Like a what?
A wart.
Oh, a wart.
Wart, a wart. We, we don't want it to be nasty, ugly. I mean, we want, we want people to sit there going, dude, that's so cool. You got to go down Main Street to see that. Not like, oh, you know, we don't want that one. And then, um, who has approving authority over that? And what I'm asking is obviously it's the cities, but if it's using two people's private property, then it's going over Main, which if I understand correctly is Route sixty-six, which is a historic byway with the state.
The state has nothing.
That ans, that answers that question right there. So that was like, I mean, could we say, hey, this is a great idea? And the state comes in like, uh, you want me to take that now? And then we just spent a bunch of money and money. We did some research. In the cities that have done these, on average, has cost the city a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Some have been more, some have been less, but that's to engineer it, to build it, to erect it. And then Victorville, California got a grant at one point for seventy-five thousand dollars just to repaint theirs. So, I worked federal budget for years and sometimes if someone's gifting you something, maybe it's not the right idea to take. You have to look at the bigger picture. So, I am not opposed to it. I think it could look great. I leave you basically a list of things that I think should be discussed and answered. And it doesn't have to be in the next win, you know, before my buzzer goes off, but things we need to consider. And then lastly on there is what's expected from the landowners when this is anchored. I mean, I look at it, is it a survey and a four-by-four plot that's also then gifted to the city? Is it just an agreement that's written or hand shoved that, hey, you can have this on our four-by-four plot, but then are we liable for that section of it? Um, is it a hundred-year lease at a dollar a year? There's just, before I'd say, hey, this is cool. Put it on my land. I'd like the council to look at these to make sure we're doing it right if we do it.
Yeah.
Again, not opposed, could be cool. Am opposed if it's going to fall over on somebody's car or end up in my property and we're building cabins there and it's like, wow, now I've got an archway over one of my cabins.
Right.
So...
Me too.
That's...
I think these are good.
So that's, I just wanted to bring it up. Like I said, five seconds left. Once the council knows something on me, just keep me in the loop so I know if I'm saying yay, nay, or if I'm going to get an agreement with them for a lease and that transfers to the city.
Right.
Or if it's just a no bill. So, that's it.
I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot of information you're asking right there that really needs to go between the people wanting to build it and you.
I think the city, if it's going to be gifted to the city and spanned over a city road.
Then again, also, there's a certain amount of those questions that like, we're not part of the design team.
Yeah.
I mean, you're asking questions from a design team and all that kind of stuff and legit questions. But you just come here and fill it down and say, hey, here's...
Well, I'm not expecting an answer now, but you as a council member, I would hope you're asking the same questions before you approve it going up.
I already have. Especially the height requirement one.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So if you have information, please share.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Jeremy Burris, come on up.
Good evening.
Hello.
I am, uh, just to give you guys a little background, I am the son-in-law of Tony Foster. He drove the trash truck here for Galena for thirty-some years. He is on his way of leaving for, and he's, he's actively done, me and his daughter are going to take over that property. I am requesting that the city rezone that property as agricultural.
Will you say that address again?
Twenty-six fourteen South Main.
So that will have to go to the planning and zoning committee, which we can send it to them. Uh, Tracy, she's our city clerk. She will, um, tell them that they need to have a, have a meeting about it. And will you explain the process of...
Yeah, we have an application that's going to call the office right there that needs to be filled out by you. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, and then planning and zoning will schedule a hearing. And they notify everybody around that property to rezone it, that you would have to appear at that hearing to talk to them about. And then it will come to council.
Okay. Alright, I guess that was the only thing I needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the Galena Little League, uh, has put in a request for a thousand-dollar sponsorship. I wonder if we've done this the last...
Ten years.
Ten years. Um, they put it toward electricity. I don't know exactly what all they put it for, but I know that's one of the things they put it towards. So, if you would like to make that sponsorship or donation, I don't know how we put it, put it down again. Um, it would need to be in the form of a motion.
We'll make that motion.
So where's it coming from? Like, where's the funds coming from? Probably.
Where's it taken the last two years?
I've been.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but as far as admin goes, do we have the money in there for it? Okay. Is the Little League field owned by the city?
Nope.
No. Sure, it's something.
Yep.
Always have.
And always will.
So we have a motion by Emily Jordan to move forward with a thousand-dollar sponsorship to the Galena Little League. Chastity, did you second it? Chast, a second by Chastity Reynolds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Cantrell?
I'm going to pass it.
Okay. Are you doing this under department? Okay. At your seats, you should see an insurance renewal. I'll let Tracy go over the changes and or differences.
So there wasn't really any changes this year. It did go up. Last year, we paid one oh four, nine fifty-eight. This year, it's one thirteen, nine thirty-five. Um, they did say to increase a lot of its fire department because the fire pack is no longer available through them. But it's still, I mean, this is about the same... But it's still, I mean, this is about the same increase we take every year.
Same fire department.
Gosh, Steve, do better.
And they haven't sent me the actual breakdown, so that I can report back to you to tell you exactly what took the increase.
And really, it wouldn't even really be that increase because we were paying for the separate fire package, so.
That's a hundred forty.
Oh, with fire pack.
But we take about, like, I think last year's increase was twelve thousand, so this year was a little bit less of an increase.
And what all is on this is property. So everything except for health insurance, basically.
What's a linebacker? What does that mean?
Football term.
I see we have coverage for terrorism. Thank you, Tracy. Way to keep this thing. Is this the insurance that we always go, ah, when we get a really big appropriation? And then we're like, ah. And then we get another one, we're like, ah, where it splits up into two. There's a big one.
Okay.
Oh, no, that's health coverage. Just kidding.
That's the medical bill.
I'm sorry.
Questions on, on our insurance?
Really, what is a linebacker?
Service line coverage quite often offered by water companies that protects homeowners from unexpected repair costs or damages to the water service lines. That's what Google says.
Oh.
Thank you, Google.
They'll be right. It's all there today. Can't be wrong.
They'll be right. Probably on Facebook next.
Any other questions, concerns? Would you like to renew insurance?
They kind of have to, kind of need to, so.
Well, do we have any other quotes, or is this it?
Is this the one where the guy comes every year and tells you?
No, that's health insurance.
They outrage it, yeah.
Yeah, so Ryan's Insurance shops it around. Yeah. For us. They're our agent.
They're a broker.
Yes, so they shop it around, and EMC has been fantastic over the last year.
Do we have to do a roll call vote, so this is the only one that?
Help for professional services.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to renew our insurance policy.
Second.
Liberties, I guess, isn't it? Kind of what this is. Yeah, property.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby, a second by Emily Jordan, to renew, uh, insurance with Ryan's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we need a resolution changing the signers for all city financial accounts.
So we went to close out the certificates of deposits, and the banks made it difficult. So they needed in writing, we need a resolution.
Just American bank.
Actually, both banks, Baxter State and American Bank. So it would be the four regular signers. The details of each one.
So this would be Resolution twenty-five oh five?
Yes.
Twenty-five oh five. It says, "A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Galena, Kansas, the city clerk of the City of Galena, Kansas, the treasurer of the City of Galena, Kansas, and the president of the council of the City of Galena, Kansas, to be the official signers of all official financial transactions pertaining to the City of Galena, Kansas, and Resolution ninety-three dash eight dated five eighteen nineteen ninety-three is hereby repealed. Whereas the above designated officials as of this date are Mayor Ashley Coles Groves, city clerk Tracy Roberts, city treasurer Jerry Roberts, and president of the council, Robert La Turner." So there's a place for everybody to sign. And whereas the above-named officials have been duly named by the governing body of the City of Galena, Kansas, and whereas the city clerk has full signing rights to close and accept all penalties for the below-listed certificates of deposit and money market certificates. And then it lists, uh, all the ones we voted on, the one, um, from the cemetery perpetual care money market in the amount of three thousand six eighty-four and ninety-nine cents at Baxter State Bank. The city, or the cemetery perpetual care CD in the amount of six thousand nine fifty-five and two cents at Baxter State Bank. The cemetery perpetual care money market, um, in the amount of twenty-one thousand three fifty-five and five cents at Baxter State Bank. The cemetery perpetual care CD in the amount of thirty-seven thousand seven eighty-eight and three cents at Baxter State Bank. The economic development CD in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars at Baxter State Bank. The City of Galena, Kansas CD in the amount of six thousand nine fifty-eight at Baxter State Bank. The City of Galena, Kansas CD in the amount of sixty-seven thousand three thirty-seven and twenty-three cents at Baxter State Bank. The CD in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars at American National Bank of Baxter Springs, Kansas. And the City of Galena Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund CD in the amount of twelve thousand dollars at American National Bank of Baxter Springs, Kansas. And then it just gives a place to sign and date.
We'll make a motion, Resolution twenty-five oh five.
Yep, we have a motion by Neil Oglesby, a second by Emily Jordan, past Resolution twenty-five dash zero five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have a safety deposit box at CBT update.
Does that need to be updated?
Yeah, we need to change the people that have access to that. It's not been updated. Probably twenty years now. So we just made a motion to say who can have access to that safety deposit box.
So who is that? Who typically?
The four signers of the financials.
So if you want, if you wanted to be the same for the safety deposit box at the bank, that would be the mayor, the city clerk, the city treasurer, and the president of the council. So myself, Tracy Roberts, Jerry Roberts, and Robert La Turner.
I'll make that a motion.
And can the minutes also stay to remove any current signers? Because it has to state who to remove, so.
Do we need actual names?
It's fine. We can just put current signers.
Okay.
Just remove all current signers?
I'll make that a motion with the removing of the current signers and adding the mayor, the current mayor, current city clerk, current city treasurer, and current president of council.
All right, so we have a motion by Emily Jordan to remove all former signers for the safety deposit box at Community Bank and Trust, and update those current signers to the current mayor of Ashley Groves, the current city clerk of Tracy Roberts, the current city treasurer of Jerry Roberts, and the current president of the council, Robert La Turner.
Second.
Second by Bob La Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, department heads, let's start with Josh.
Uh, so, update on our insurance for our, our storm damage at the barn. I've got a couple of bids. The insurance company was there today looking at it, so I don't have really.
Will you give an update on that? Like, what?
We took the roof off of the garage section of the barn, and then the whole barn, it kind of loosened a lot of metal as it went through there, and it ripped the, the roof off of the storage building on the north end. So a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of damage, is what it's looking like. So we're waiting on the insurance adjuster to look at those and see where we go, just to keep you guys in.
Please, what bid is it? Safe, or is it the?
The schools. I don't know if years ago, some building trades, uh, folks at the school built it, but I don't know if the city bought the material or what, but I think that, I think the school has it on their insurance claim.
I just, I, I just wonder whose side that was actually on. Yeah, it's, it says the pretty sides on the school, that means it's Route three one, I wondered if the city put it on.
Probably just because that's where it, I needed it, please. And then I've got bids on painting the water tower, though that's come up quite a bit. Been working on those for a couple months. So Pittsburgh Tank and Tower. My first one, I've got two options here. Just trying to find the difference in them. One's ninety-seven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, the other one's ninety-nine thousand three forty. It looks like the second option has a clear coat over the top. And then tank spec corp. Which the, the person I've been speaking with there has been involved in every painting we've done on it since it was, the, the two times it's been repainted.
What's his name, Tracy?
Ames Brookshire. So a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the base bid total, fifty-six hundred dollars for the logo. And then each additional logo is forty-two hundred dollars. Right now it's got two on it, one going on the logos.
Hundred and thirty, what?
Hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred.
Does the plus sign in the logos?
Yeah, it said repainting distant logos.
So it's just like, where is it now?
But the tank spec corp came up with a little bit better design. The blue color at the bottom would kind of hide the mold, but it's just gonna get there because the sun doesn't hit it. And then the push on the base, I think this one looks better. And I know it's, you know, more money, but the guy that bid it drives by it every day, so he's got a little bit invested in it. In that aspect. As far as materials, I think they were similar. Nobody's blasting it and going down the bare metal. They're both pressure washing it. They said next time it'll probably take one more, and then next time they'll, uh, need to blast it down the metal.
Yeah, we did in the nineties, or was that the inside we did in the nineties?
They said it's, the inside. They said it's never been done. They did test it, and there's no way it'd hang on it, so at least it was done about.
Two minutes.
We've got about seventy-four. Not, not a lot of places to do that. I think we've got about seventy-four thousand dollars in special water. We tried, I've been waiting on an answer for probably a couple months from our water project that, you know, the London administrator on that. And I think she said that it wouldn't be, since it wasn't in the original scope, it couldn't be taken out of those London proceeds on our, on our, our well project.
Could, and I don't know since he read the bid, but could you reach out to that Pittsburgh company and see what painting it like that, how that would adjust the cost? Is that allowed?
So, yeah, that, they wouldn't change the bid. We would just have to ask if that would be included or if it'd be an extra for another color. They acted like it wasn't, you know, if we changed the color of the logos or did anything like that, that it wouldn't be extra, so. Because they're, I've already got that color, it's just gonna be this much paint versus this much paint. I don't see that it'd be an issue. But if it is, we could, I could come back and report to council.
Most time there's gonna be a little bit, because they're changing the color in the middle, so it'll kind of break and.
Which they've already accounted for with the logos, so that's why I'm thinking if they just did, because they're priming it. So if they prime it, then they're doing their, they're gonna do it white first, so they draw their lines with any stuff.
I'd ask him.
Yeah.
I mean, at least we know what we'll add on anyway.
So can you ask him to then report back?
Yeah, or you can go ahead with the condition that this, the color is.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Better. What do y'all think? I don't know what that faces and.
I like the other, I like the design of the other one.
Well, that's what we're gonna ask, if the lower bid can do.
I like the design.
For that, for that price or very, very close to it.
They said no.
Yeah, I didn't know if it would be a lot more, more that part, more the higher price.
I don't think it is, because the paint. You're still buying the same amount of paint. One's blue, one's white.
Color blue. It's gonna be a worker blue, worker color.
Maybe, maybe.
Just as long as it's not the light blue, it's moving back.
No, it's now, it's the high.
No.
Discoloration.
The dark color helps with the, the mold. They, I've got a bid also to put a, a mixer in the tank. Um, that's something I want to wait until we get our well projects done with and see what kind of funds are left for that. But if they've got circulation in the tank, the reason it molds is because of condensation. Just like if you have a glass of water in the summertime, or any time, if you've got a glass of water that's cold and warmer and it condensates, that's what allows the mold to grow. They say if we stir the water in the tank, then it doesn't do that. And that's a fairly reasonable price to get that done. I just, I want to see if we can incorporate that in the other project.
So what would you like to do as far as repainting the tower? Got two bids, uh, one at ninety-seven or ninety-nine, there were two options. And then one at one thirty-eight, five hundred, plus a fifty-six hundred additional logo, correct? Because they didn't include any logo.
Fifty-six and forty-two.
And forty-two.
And forty-two, so fifty-six and forty-two. So.
Forty-two's over times two, right?
The original.
That was the original. And then if you add a second one?
So roughly one forty-eight, right? About, so roughly one forty-eight for the tank spec and ninety-nine thousand three twenty for the, is it Pittsburgh? Pittsburgh Tank and Tower.
The tank spec didn't have any add-ons. Are you adding that to both of them?
No, I thought you said ninety-eight, three twenty, ninety-nine, three twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, the tank spec is why I have the add-ons.
Yes.
Yeah. Which would be about one forty-eight. That's a lot.
Yeah, so the, the bid for Pittsburgh Tank and Tower, I would ask for option two, because it has the clear coat. And that ninety-nine, three twenty includes the logos repainted.
Correct. So what would you like to do?
Well, one other question that we need to ask the people providing the service before we.
Well, that's what we were saying.
We're gonna have to take.
Yeah, send both bids.
As they are, then we can talk to them about changing it, and just say, we're at this price, but we want this.
Yeah, because we can make the motion, because we already have the bids.
We can't go over that amount and talk.
I don't think it's an issue, because when we got the bid, I said, what color did you bid? And he said, because I know the council could have a different view on the color. And I said that it's all gonna be pretty close to the same, no matter the color. So I don't think splitting that up would be an additional cost, and if it is, I'll report back.
How long's this company been painting?
Let me see what it says. One hundred years. It's right on their logo. Hundred years and still climbing.
Nice. So what would you like to do?
So we've got part of the funds, where's the rest of the funds coming from? I just have to come up with it.
Water.
Water?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we accept option two for the Pittsburgh Tank and Tower at ninety-nine, three twenty.
Do you want to put it, I mean, I know Josh said he was, but with the circulation on.
I'd like to find out if we get a cover of the design or, you know, price. So you'd have to make a condition, but I wouldn't.
Design at the same price.
At the same price. Is that okay with you, Neil?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. We have a motion by Neil to go with option two from Pittsburgh Tank and Tower for the ninety-nine thousand, is it three twenty?
Three twenty, yes, ma'am.
Ninety-nine thousand, three twenty, with the condition that they would match the painting design from tank spec with the Navy. Is that correct?
Yep, with the color bands.
With the color bands. All right.
Second.
We have a second by Rick Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do we need a roll call vote for that?
Yes, this is one, two.
Mr. Oglesby?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tracy?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. La Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. Anything else?
I've got one more.
Okay, can we get back to that? Okay, fire department.
I just got a couple of FPIs, we had a hundred and twenty-nine runs so far this year, that's about, even where we were at last year, the rain kinda helped last week. Um, and with, uh, Josh was out, and we had about fifteen, sixteen, uh, calls that we went through where we either helped people get trees off or cut trees up for them, but. Even into the next morning. And then, uh, our repeater for our radio, we've been kinda whipping along on a backup for the last two years, and they've been telling us that it's just because of parts, so. Uh, it wasn't too long after Sheriff Henderson got in, uh, we've got a brand new repeater now that's been installed last week, so.
Could be.
Should be up and running on that, so, other than that, we're good.
Thank you. And any storm damage on your end? Okay. Uh, library? Nothing. City clerk?
So, Glenna Mydusen, just wanted to let everybody know and invite you all to dinner in the video fundraiser that they're having, April seventeenth at the senior building at five thirty. And then, they're doing Junk in the Trumps on the citywide at half noon. And you can rent a spot.
Yeah, so you can rent a spot if you don't wanna set it up at your house, as if they're meeting, if you don't wanna set up at your house, you can rent a spot down there and bring your car or table or whatever and set it down there. That's it, I don't have anything. Uh, city attorney?
You got anything additional?
Oh, uh, Chief Allison said his update, um, you have it there, this is March seventeenth to April sixth. That a hundred and sixty-seven calls for service, nine officer-initiated events, fourteen traffic stops, thirty-five reports taken, five agency assists, eight arrests. Three DUI cases, two drug cases, and sixteen animal control or, and or code enforcement events. Does he want? Um, what did you need, attorney client?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, keeping in?
Tracy, can I just stay and say?
Can't stay, or you want him to stay?
He can.
Okay.
I need, uh.
Seems like he's up.
I need to motion for an executive client, keeping in the department head's office, ten minutes, so six fifty-two to seven oh two.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby to preserve, attorney client privilege, executive session, keeping in the city attorney and department.